Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Paramount adjourned meeting of the Paramount City Council. Could I have roll call, please?
Councilmember Keen?
Here.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hoffmeier?
Here.
Mayor Hanson.
Motion to excuse me, Mayor Hanson.
I'll second that. Roll call.
Councilmember Keen?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hoffmeier?
Yes. At this time, could I have appointed Brenda Olmos, please come forward?
Please read your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that you take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge any views which you're about to enter?
I do.
Congratulations, Councilmember Lemmons.
We'd just like to congratulate Brenda and welcome her aboard to the Paramount City Council. Brenda, would you like to say a few words?
I will, Vice Mayor. Thank you. Thank you for allowing me. Well, hello Paramount residents, family and friends. I'm deeply humbled to actually stand before you and share our passion for Paramount today. For all my life, Paramount has been my home. I have an immense amount of gratitude for this city because it has allowed me and my husband to raise our family and build a life that we're proud of. We're all gathered here today because we care about our city. When we really care about something, we're bound to have different opinions, and that's okay, because in the end, democracy is about sharing different views, respecting each other, and working together for the greater good. This decision wasn't easy, just as my husband and my kids. And it may be difficult to understand. During these last few weeks, I've relied on faith and I've asked God to guide me during this journey. It's time we bring our city together and focus on Paramount's progression. I'm truly convinced that Paramount's best days are ahead of us. I will continue to make public safety my number one priority, Adriana. And if you see me doing ride-alongs with our Sheriff's Department, say hello. I'm excited to work closely with our school district to invest in our Paramount's future, but above all, I'm here to listen and respect your opinion. I would like to thank all the council members for seeing something in me and giving me the opportunity to serve our city. I would like to say a special thank you to my husband, David, my children, Alexa and Noah, to my loving mom, Mary, and my brother who couldn't be here today, and to all my family and my friends that are here tonight. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to working with you. Y para todas personas que hablan español, solo les quería decir que estoy aquí para trabajar y servir. Gracias por su apoyo y que Dios los bendiga a todos. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Brenda. Do we have any public comments or City Council public comment updates?
No updates from previous meetings, sir.
How about public comments?
We sure do. We have two public comment cards showing two speakers. The first speaker is Ms. Cindy Nelson, and she'd like to address the council about the intersection of Lakewood and Somerset. Ms. Nelson?
Hi, council. Welcome, new council member.
Thank you.
I'm here to request that a left-hand turn arrow be installed at the intersection of Lakewood and Somerset Boulevards. There are left-turn arrows on the north and south-facing lights, but none on the east-west-facing lights. This is an extremely dangerous intersection. I'm sure if someone has the data, you will see that there's a high number of accidents there. I personally have seen a few, and I see the debris from other accidents. I believe half of the intersection is in Bellflower and half is in Paramount City Limits, so perhaps the cities can work together in getting an east-west left-turn signal installed sooner than later. I also have some statements from residents that they sent to me. Michelle Gore, who owns the 7-Eleven on the corner of Somerset and Lakewood, he writes, "To whom it may concern, owning a small business on Lakewood and Somerset Boulevard, the 7-Eleven, for the past seven years, I've witnessed several accidents that could have been prevented with an arrow. Please consider for the safety of our citizens." Michelle Gore. Gloria writes, "Yes, scared to turn left while on Somerset Eastbound to go to Walmart. Can't see oncoming traffic because cars in front turning right block the view." Sidney says, "I take this every day to go to the gym, and it's such a blind spot." Melissa writes, "It really is a bad intersection. I used to go through that intersection every weekend on my way to work, and I would see an accident or debris from one they cleaned up just about every weekend." Mary writes, "I hate that intersection when making the left coming from Somerset, Paramount towards Bellflower. I drive an SUV and sometimes can't see oncoming traffic. It's scary. Hope everyone is okay." Virginia writes, "They should have a left-hand turn arrow signal there. You have to be extremely cautious when making your turn." Gail writes, "Before the car wash was built, there was a horrible accident. I believe lives were lost. It took out that Burger Stan, I think it was called Sam's." And Maria writes, "Yes, my two friends were in that accident. She was driving a BMW. The motor of that car flew out, and they were both hospitalized for a long time. One of them still has bad memories about that accident." And then Desiree says, "Also, please point out that there is Hollywood Sports feet away from this intersection where kids frequent very often, and they tend to use this intersection to get to the 7-Eleven or Sky Burger when taking their breaks. I live not too far as well, and my brother was involved in an accident at this intersection years ago. Thank goodness he was okay, but his car was totaled." Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Vice Mayor, we will definitely report this to the City of Bellflower, too. The intersection is actually situated within their city limits. Paramount's city limit starts at the property line, so it definitely is the City of Bellflower, but we will definitely reach out then and let them know about the intersection and the requests.
So no part of it is in Paramount?
No part of it is in Paramount. I'm not sure if we pay for maintenance to the City of Bellflower to maintain that intersection. I can find that out if that's our portion, because many times if there are cars leaving your town, you are technically responsible for that, to pay for the maintenance of that. So I'll find that out, and I'll report back to the council if any of that is in the City of Paramount.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Our next speaker, Mr. Vice Mayor, is Ms. Andrea Crowe from the Paramount Library. Ms. Crowe?
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor Hoffmeier, council members and residents of Paramount. This week Paramount Library's Summer Discovery Program continues with an event for every age group. Tomorrow, Wednesday, July 17th, at 10:30, adults are invited to create an accordion album that is perfect for recording thoughts, drawings, and grocery lists. We're also hosting Adult 101 Decision Making tomorrow at 1:00 p.m. Teens will learn techniques that make decision-making easier. And for children ages 7 to 12, we have slime making on Saturday, July 20th, at 2:00 p.m. Thank you.
No further comments. Moving on with the consent calendar, is a motion?
So moved. Second.
So moved, a second roll call, please.
Councilmember Keen?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Olmos?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hoffmeier?
Yes. Item number three, Resolution Number 190.028, authorize the adoption of the proposal to implement the park neighborhood permit parking distribution guidelines to existing neighborhood permit parking areas. Staff, report.
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor, council. As you know, we're all familiar with the lack of parking in most, if not all, of our neighborhoods. In fact, this program recently led to a sharp increase in requests for neighborhood permit parking over the last five years. In an effort to address this ever-growing request, you may recall the City Council adopted a moratorium last year on new requests for this type of parking privilege, and that is neighborhood permit parking. The moratorium was lifted once the council approved new guidelines for evaluating new requests for neighborhood permit parking. Then, as you recall, that was then followed by approval of restrictions for the actual distribution of permits to any newly-approved neighborhood permit parking area. The restrictions included, for instance, a cap on the number of permits issued per household. The council then, at that time, directed us to go back and look at placing restrictions on the distribution permits that have already been issued to existing areas in town and come up with a reasonable phasing period and a phasing plan. So before you tonight is a study on how many resident permits actually exist out there already and what the impact to residents would be should the council desire to phase-in restrictions on the number of permits a household can have. And with that, I'll turn it over to our Public Safety Director, Ms. Adriana Lopez, who will handle the item. Adriana?
Thank you, John. Good evening, Vice Mayor and council members. As John mentioned, I will be presenting to you the neighborhood distribution guidelines, but before I do that, I'll give you a background. On April 2nd, 2019, the City Council adopted formal guidelines to distribute neighborhood permit parkings for newly-approved areas. During the same meeting, the council directed staff to analyze the possible impacts of distributing guidelines, actually distribution guidelines, in existing neighborhood permit parking areas. So we took this item to the Public Safety Commission, and they heard it on April 23rd, May 8th, and June 25th, 2019. In order for residents to express their concerns or support for the proposed changes, staff mailed letters to the households within all the existing neighborhood permit parking areas, informing them of the Public Safety Commission meetings as well as tonight's City Council meeting. Under our current permit parking program, residents are allowed to obtain a parking permit for each registered vehicle. That means if they have two cars that are registered to that address, they'll obtain two permits. If they have six, that's what they'll be able to obtain. In addition to that, they can get three guest parking permits and an unlimited amount of one-day parking permits. What we're proposing tonight is that the City Council look at the distribution limits that was set for the newly-approved neighborhoods. That would be four permanent parking permits per household, two guest parking permits per household, and an unlimited amount of one-day parking permits. The permits would have a two-year expiration date, with the exception of the one-day parking permits. This is a side-by-side comparison that gives you the current program and then the proposed As I mentioned, the public safety staff was asked to analyze, and what we did is we looked at all the street segments and whole neighborhoods to identify the requesting practices of our residents. We identified 43 streets that have neighborhood permit parking with a total number of households of slightly under 1,100. Staff further analyzed the number of parking permits that are requested by the residents to determine the level of impact. So we categorized it into, in four categories: low impact, no impact, low impact, medium impact, and high impact. What we did is we put the percentages of the slightly under 1,100 households, so 84% of the households would not feel any impact should these proposed guidelines be adopted today. 11% would fall under the low impact, which means they have five or more, six permits. And then we have medium impact at 4% and high impact at 1%. And on the right-hand side, you could see how many households actually fall into each category. So the high impact would be 16 households. What Public Safety is proposing to do is to implement this neighborhood permit parking distribution guidelines to existing neighborhood permit parkings under a planned approach. What we're proposing is to have a six-month grace period for those people that need additional time to find alternative parking, and then Public Safety staff would hold distribution workshops. So people would have the ability to go in and attend one of these workshops and get their permits. This is what our proposed parking permits would look like. As you could see, the decals would include a license plate number and an expiration date. That's completely different from what we have right now. And then the guest parking permits would also have an expiration date. This is one of the ways that we feel we would be able to control how many people actually have parking permits with an expiration date. As you know, Paramount continues to have a challenge with our public parking, and because of that, our staff conducts nighttime parking enforcement either on a monthly basis or twice a month, from 9:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. And what we've noticed is that permit parking is the third-largest violation that we cite for. The first one would be street sweeping, and the second one is being parked in the red zone. Overall, and these numbers here are just for permit parking, but overall in fiscal year 1819, the nighttime enforcement resulted in issuing 1,100 citations for various violations. The recommended action for this item is to read my title only and adopt Resolution Number 19028, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions, Adriana?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor. When you talk about the impact, no impact, low impact, I'm assuming that what that means is people who would require five to six permits, is that what you're saying, that those people already exist, or you're just...
Let me go back to that, Ms. Lemon. So if we're looking at, let me move here, these are the numbers, if people, 84% of the people would not be impacted at all. And if they fall into the low impact, means that they have more than four permits, and that's the cap.
So those are already issued to them, that's what I'm saying. So that actually exists already?
Yes.
It's not potential it exists, correct?
It exists.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Adriana, for the people who have had parking permits in their neighborhoods for 10 years, they would now go to this parking structure? Is that what this is all about?
If the council agrees this item, yes.
Okay. So everybody will be on the same system?
Correct.
If I can just say one other thing, Mr. Mayor. This is something that I had discussions with staff about, but maybe it's something for the council to think about. I still am concerned about, you know, the 11%, the 4%, because usually those are the people that are most impacted and maybe can't afford to do anything differently. So I have discussed with staff on time and just kind of surveyed my own neighborhood because it's highly impacted with parking. And in driving through the neighborhood, it was like probably 35% of it, they only have single-car driveways. They don't have two-car driveways, whatever. Because I know one of the things we talked about when we were discussing this is, well, they have four on-street permits, but they can put like one or two people in the garage if it's open or in the driveway. So something that if the staff, if the council agrees, maybe the staff could look into for us, is if it would be possible, I can't remember the subset, name of those funds that were the subset of CHODO funds that we talked about the last meeting for housing repairs?
Yeah, CBG funds.
Yeah, CBG dollars. Maybe doing a driveway expansion rebate to where if they'll expand their driveway to hold two cars, that we could look into doing a rebate similar to we do like roof rebates and garage door rebates, that type of thing, for these people who are going to be impacted regardless. And as I've said in the past, I believe being able to park near your home is not a privilege. You know, it's something that everybody should be entitled to do. And maybe then for those people who are willing to expand their driveways, or if they don't have one at all right now and it's possible to put one in, that could give them some assistance from the city for the impact that this is going to cause. But I know it's something that you would need to look at, and it's something you guys would have to agree to have staff look at.
When we initially, when you initially had brought it up, we did check into it, and initially our finding was that CBG funds were not in allowable use. But we will, if it is the council's desire, we could look at other funding sources that are out there for that. That's, you know, again, something if there is a consensus among the council, we can definitely do more research on it.
Would there be an injunction to them studying a rebate program for driveways?
No.
I don't.
Any other questions?
Can I just say something? Adriana, thank you for getting the letters out in English and Spanish. That made a big difference, the people having questions. They exactly knew the program, and they understood it, so I appreciate you putting it in Spanish on that. Thank you.
Thank you, councilor.
All right, do we have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Moved in second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Keen?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Olmos?
Yes.
Yes. Item number four, it's a public hearing. The assessment of charges for delinquent refuse collection. Staff, report, please.
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor and members of the council, I'm going to be handling the site and I in the absence of Assistant City Manager David Chung, who's on vacation tonight. Before you today is the annual assessment of charges for delinquent refuse collection for residential customers. As you know, our municipal code requires us to assist helmet with the collection process of unpaid fees by forwarding the assessments to the LA County Auditor Controller's Office for inclusion with the property owner's tax bill. During this process, the property owners are given ample time and several written notices to pay their delinquent trash bills. This process is necessary as a matter of public health to help ensure payment of the regular and proper collection of community refuse. During the 2018 calendar year, there were 296 pass-through accounts totaling over $85,000. As such, staff is recommending today that the City Council submit the 2018 Delinquent Refuse Collection Charge List to the County Auditor Controller's Office, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. And with us tonight in the audience, I believe I saw Mr. Bill Kalpokoff from Calment Services, who can answer any questions as well.
Do we have any questions before we open the public hearing?
Bill, PK? I don't have any questions, so you can hide, because I knew you were thinking I was going to.
No, no. Any question's a good question.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience who's speaking favor? Anybody opposed?
Move and close public hearing.
Second.
Move the second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Keen?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Olmos?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hoffmeier?
Yes.
Motion to approve?
I'll second.
Move the second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Keen?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Olmos?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hoffmeier?
Yes. Item number five, opponent, Public Safety Commissioner. And with the vacancy is going to be filled, this appointee for the vacant Public Safety Commissioner will be Marcy Bridges. Marcy was born and raised in the city of Paramount. She is a volunteer participant for the Neighborhood Watch, member of the Paramount PTA, and former coordinator and volunteer for American Cancer, Society's Relay for Life, former vice president and current member of Teptic Cities Organization, and recipient of the 2015 Woman of the Year Award, the 33rd State Senate District with the Clues Paramount. So would you please move forward, or we can recognize her, how do you want to do this?
You just stand up.
You'll stand up?
Congratulations, Congress.
Item number six, Resolution Number 19.029, authorizes application for Los Angeles County Metropolitan Transportation Authority Section 5310 grant. Staff, report, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council. We were recently informed about a new federal grant program for transit. The program is administered through Metro and is actually a competitive grant process. As you know, we made some wide-scale changes to our transit program earlier this year, and the grant that we are applying for today will be, will actually supplement these changes that we've had, and will focus primarily our transit services to our senior and disabled community members. So with that, I will turn it over to our Community Services and Regulation Director, Mr. David Johnson. Adriana, David?
Thank you, John. Vice Mayor Johnson. So again, this money actually comes through the federal government. It's a federal transit administration grant. They do provide grants for operating in capital, and it's under their Section 5310, enhanced mobility for seniors and individuals with disabilities. So that's the population that we're serving with our point-to-point program, taxi program. And the agency that's going to administer those funds and administer the grants would be LA County Metro. It is, as John mentioned, a competitive grant. We're being assisted with this grant through administrative cooperative. You know the better as guests of taxi in white and yellow. That is our point-to-point taxi operator, and they're actually helping us with the grant. So what we will be applying for is, these are aspects, again, as John mentioned, to supplement what we're currently offering through our Paramount Emotion Program. So if you're an eligible resident, which means under this, what we're applying for is if you need certain income guidelines, we're trying to eliminate the dollar co-pay that you would normally pay. We're looking to expand our medical taxi program, so currently, right now, you're for your seniors or disabled, you can get a medical taxi card with the city, you can go five miles outside the boundaries of the city to get to various medical facilities. Some of these seniors and disabled folks need to go a little bit further than that. They do have some specialty care, so we're looking to gain additional funds to allow folks to go well beyond the five miles to get some specialty care during the length of this contract. And we're looking generally just at our seniors are able to use our dial-and-write system inside town for 20 trips per month. What we'd be allowed to do with this grant is expand that number beyond 20 and allow them to use more trips in any given month. Resolution 19029 allows the city manager to apply for these funds, and we're recommending that the City Council adopt Resolution 19029. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions for David?
Move adoption.
Move the second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Keen?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Olmos?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hoffmeier?
Yes. Item number seven, approval of the audit of professional services. Staff, report.
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor. As you know, cities are required to go through some pretty rigorous audits each year. Auditors spend a number of days combing through our books just to make sure that things are done properly. For instance, we had auditors, three auditors in here last week that were in here for the full week. And as you know, we are given an award each year for the job that we do with managing our books. Additionally, starting about three years ago, we launched a voluntary audit that goes really above and beyond the traditional audit that we have done. Again, this is something that we don't have to do, but it's something that we want to do. It's the right thing to do, and it's done to continually safeguard the public's money. But in order to do these two audits, we need your approval today on the contract with the auditing firm. So with that, I'll turn it over to our Director of Finance, Ms. Green.
Thank you, John. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Guiding for you is to authorize expenses for professional services in excess of $40,000 with Avant Time Day Company, and a quick slide presentation for you. As you know, auditing and the day-to-day tasks that we handle, such as making payments to vendors or issuing payroll checks, so a lot of major duties that we do in finance include safeguarding city assets, recording financial transactions, and being audited. All this culminates with production of audited comprehensive annual financial reports, which we require by law to do. Our annual financial report, so-called CAFR, has been audited by an outside independent auditing firm for many decades. The independent auditors play an important role in testing and evaluating the city's internal control and overall financial management. As the financial reporting requirements continue to evolve, the auditors and their consulting team provide guidance and service for us as a resource. Avant Time Day Company has been our independent auditor for over a decade. Over the years, we have voted for different audit teams. In addition, Avant Time Day also has a consulting arm that is independent on the auditing teams, and they assist us with the constantly evolving financial reporting requirements and accounting standards. The cost of providing all these services is approximately $53,500. Despite we've been getting clean opinion by our audit firm for over three decades, we also have been receiving the national recognition for achievement of excellence in financial reporting. As good stewards, since two years ago, we voluntarily requested Avant Time Day to perform an additional audit known as Agree Upon Procedure. This procedure is to further examine our policies and procedures and internal controls in further detail. We believe this added Agree Upon Procedure is very valuable, as this is different from the annual financial audit, and this allows the auditors to dig deeper in a specific area of our operations. Avant Time Day currently has over 100 city clients, and a small percentage of the clients also engage them to do Agree Upon Procedures. Some do it because of areas of concern. As for us, we voluntarily do it to add level of assurance in our internal control. In the past two years, just to give you some, past three years, I'm going to give you some examples, Agree Upon Procedure will focus on 100% of wire transactions. Last year, we examined accounts payable and vendor status. Last year, we examined accounts payable and vendor setup, and both they have found no findings and no changes to our policy and procedures. This year, the focus is internal control and authorizations over the human resources and payroll process. Under the city's purchasing policy, professional services exceed $40,000 required authorization by the city council. Based on a variety of work performed by Faber Tryand Day, the cost for their services will be exceeding this threshold. Therefore, we are asking for approval tonight. This wraps up my report. I will be happy to answer any questions when I have.
Anybody have any questions?
I do.
Go ahead.
I just have one question. So if we already have the independent audit that we have had, and they've done it for 10 years, and now we want to exceed that voluntarily, correct? Why are we going with the same company that's been doing it for over 10 years? If we really want oversight, I would think you would want to go with an outside independent than what, than what we've been using and getting ready to use for 10 years to see how in actuality, if those are concise, if they're complete, if there's anything that maybe they're, they're so used to doing work with Paramount that maybe somebody else with fresh set of eyes would see something different. Is there a reason why we don't go out with it with somebody else?
Yeah, that's a very good question. We actually consider that. There's a few reasons. One, it's more effective for them to do it because they know our operations very well. They know our policy and procedures. They already have it. And so they can identify weaknesses right to there, if we have one. If we were to hire a new firm, they have to gather all the documents that we have and look at it overview, and then before they can identify areas of concerns. And then we also work very well with our audit teams. And keep in mind, we changed audit teams over the years. We don't work with the same people. And so we believe that they are independent and they look at it with fresh eyes, even within the four different teams and four different partners we work with. So we're very comfortable from the cost perspective, from a time perspective, and being worked with this firm, we're very confident with their work ethics and their reputation out there. So we decided to go with them. But in the future, we could consider going another firm if that's what the council decides.
Mr. Vice Mayor, if I may add to, correct me if I'm wrong, are there standard procedures by which the auditors have to follow that are set by the state that have, that the way our books are laid out that they have to follow? Or is it, okay, so that's another reason too, is that they do follow a set of procedures. But that's a very good point that maybe we, as Ms. Lam mentioned, that we can look at.
Right. Because I noticed that with the city, that we kind of use, we've had the same companies for 20 years, 30 years. And I just think that sometimes a new perspective is a way to go. I mean, after a whole decade, I think, you know, we could look at bringing in somebody different.
The good thing too, as Ms. Lam mentioned, is that it's usually a different team that comes in every year.
Right, but the same company. So I just don't want to always pigeonhole us into the same categories with the same engineers, the same audit, the same, because then it just, it just starts looking a little shady, in my opinion. So I just think, you know, to change it up every decade or so would be a good idea.
I'll move the item.
Second.
Move to second. Roll call please.
Councilmember Gieden?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Olmos?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hoff.
Yes. Instead of doing number eight right now, we have a special guest here. John, would you want to introduce her, please?
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor, thank you. We did have a speaker's card completed, but she was not here. But the Vice Mayor would like to invite up Ms. Lena Gonzalez, our new state senator from the 33rd district. She's in the audience tonight.
Apologize for my tardiness, but I just wanted to say, first and foremost, it's an honor and pleasure to now serve and represent the city of Paramount, which includes our mutual constituents and now nearly over, or close to a million residents in southeast LA, Paramount Lake with Signal Hill and Long Beach. It's a real pleasure and honor to be here in front of each and every one of you. We look forward to the work that we'll have and join together to make sure that we make our district and the cities that exist in the district better. I have Tyler Curly, who's in the back, our legislative director. You'll get to know and meet him very, very well. And as we're hiring up, we'll make sure that you are acclimated to our team. And finally, I just want to say congratulations to Councilmember Olmos. I'm very, very proud. Yes, I'm proud of you. Sorry I couldn't make this swearing in. I heard it happened in five minutes. You guys are very efficient. But I will say that it's just an honor and a real, real pleasure to be able to see more women in elected office and continue to, you know, make sure that you're serving the public to your best ability. And I know you certainly will just knowing you. So thank you again for the time, and I look forward to continuing our work together. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a number, number eight, approval of the Bellflower Paramount Joint Activity Transportation Plan.
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor and Council. A few months ago, you heard a presentation about the Joint Bellflower Paramount Active Transportation Plan. And at that time, the plan was in draft form. Today, it is actually in final form and presented to you today. So here with us once again is our consultant for this plan, Mr. Jacob Leom, and he is an associate with KYUA Consultants. Mr. Leom?
Thank you, Mr. Moreno, and good evening, Vice Mayor and councilmembers. It's really great to be back in Paramount to close out this project, this chapter within your city and Bellflower on the Active Transportation Plan. As a reminder, my name is Jacob Leom. I'm an associate planner at KYUA, where a planning and landscape architecture firm based out of San Diego. And our work spans the central coast all the way down to the metro valley. So again, thank you for giving us the opportunity to work with yourselves, the community, and Bellflower on this active transportation plan to make sure that residents and everybody who visits place and works in Paramount has good, safe, comfortable, and convenient options to, that don't almost just require a motor vehicle. So with that, I'm going to, for today, it's going to be a very short presentation since the majority have already seen this. Again, today is just to let you know that we've made some final edits. We've coordinated closed ads and things, and we're ready to seal the deal and take you some ideas on next steps. And Councilmember Olmos, this would be an opportunity for you. We happen to kind of get a quick overview of our efforts began in early 2018.
Thank you.
So again, thank you. This project was funded from California's ATP Cycle 2 Program. And it was an effort between Paramount, Bellflower, KYUA, and Catherine Biddy and Associates. They're a community apprairings firm based out of Pasadena. So everybody worked together on this project to make sure that our voices were heard, that planning and engineering all made sure that the plan was successful. The purpose of the ATP, which stands for Active Transportation Plan or Project, is to make sure that we're addressing multi-use paths, bikeways, pedestrian deficiencies for transportation and recreation uses. It's about improving safety, convenience, and accessibility for all people on the streets. And through analysis and committed input, the major purpose of this is to make sure that we're developing a list of projects for future grant opportunities so that both Bellflower and Paramount are able to use this plan as a roadmap to pursue potential funding opportunities in the immediate and forecasted future. Like I mentioned at the beginning, this project began in January 2018, and we wrapped it up, just like I said, this summer. And so between that year and a half, we conducted communication. We conducted all kinds of analyses. And we had conversations between both cities to make sure that what was included in this plan is something that's going to be useful, so that it doesn't just sit on that proverbial shelf that a lot of us planners and engineers unfortunately joke around about. Hopefully, this is not one of those cases. Again, why are we doing this? We're looking to improve bikeways and opportunities throughout both cities. That includes multi-use paths like the Bellflower and now soon Paramount Bike Trail, looking at bicycle lanes, bicycle routes, and separate bikeways like the lanes on the bottom right corner. In addition, we're looking at walking improvements, everything from making sure that there's a well-connected, complete network of sidewalks, high-visibility crosswalks, transit amenities, just like the incredible job we've done here on Paramount Boulevard. Really, that sense of really great, you set the bar high. So I hope you're able to continue that because the work you've done at Paramount Boulevard ever since we came out here a year and a half ago was really impressive for us and curb ramps. You know, these are the basic necessities. And many times, I mean, like I said, we work all over the steady California. You're doing really great. And there are other cities not as fortunate as Bellflower and Paramount. Coordination was necessary for this kind of project. We don't start from square one. So we've, we took into account the previously completed Bellflower Paramount Bicycle Control Master Plan, general plan, circulation element items, land use, collision, transit, and other destination analyses. All of that was included in this own ATP. Part of the scope of work and due diligence for any type of planning or engineering project, we conduct a community apprair. Not only do we have surveys available for the community members to participate in, but we also went out to the community. We participated in the sustainability for Bellflower Street Fest, the car show, and yeah, that was worth the celebration. We were able to talk to over, I would say, over 230 residences, and we had close to 500 completed surveys between both cities. So incredible for us. It's always refreshing and rewarding to be able to say that we had a great turnout with all kinds of outreach. So again, thank you to the residents who at one point hopefully participated in this. In order to develop projects that are included in the ATP, we have to consider many things. Here's a list of some of the characteristics, you know, safety, community characteristics, demographics, activity centers in transit, making sure we're closing any gaps in the walking and biking infrastructure, and actually recognizing what kind of facility would make sense on certain streets. At the end of the day, we were able to develop a new core master plan with bike wing pedestrian improvements. As you can see here, it's a network that's comprised of bike trails, bike lanes, bike routes, as well as some more higher, the more safer and happily traveled quarters like the Bellflower Bike Trail. Specific to Paramount, you'll see that we were able to, once we understood the characteristics of the community and the city and the constraints within the streets, we're able to, you know, develop this network that's proposed in the map. And again, all of that's detailed out in the full master plan of the report that was available to you all. But again, what we're looking at is making sure we're connecting schools and parks and places of worship and shopping centers, and making sure we're connected to, you know, the West End and the Corridor Branch. And with this great spine that I have now, it's what will soon run through both Paramount and Bellflower. So that was some of the priorities that we were trying to make sure we connected to. Within the report, we want to make sure, at KYUA, we want to make sure we're producing something that, again, is not going to just, you know, gather dust on the shelf. We design our reports specifically to make sure that you can use this information to, again, pursue future grants. So every, we, part of the scope of work, we took the top five projects in Paramount, the top five projects in Bellflower, and we created cut sheets that has added lines with facts about the corridor, a 3D image of what it could potentially look like. And then, again, we took a closer look at potential improvements along that corridor. Those, again, can be found in the report. But we took the top five in Paramount and Bellflower, and we did this exercise. And lastly, the thing I want to, again, reiterate to Vice Mayor and councilmembers, all staff here in Paramount, is that this is now the roadmap, you know. This is what's going to allow you to hopefully go ahead and pursue future grants. And we all know how difficult it is to start looking for money here, budget to, you know, construct some of these things. So thankfully, between federal, state, and local, regional grant programs that are out there, that are competitive, that are out there, you can use this to hopefully pursue that. And we hope that we made it as easy as possible for your staff to be able to use this. So as a reminder, you know, ATP Cycle 5 will be coming out next year. You're in the midst of the Prop 68, I'm sure, grant process. As a reminder, we can get creative with these kind of projects, especially like the multi-use paths that we propose, you know. Those could all be linear park elements. So don't ever, don't forget about trying to connect and get creative, whether it's urban greening, stormwater, infrastructure. I mean, there are grants out there that could be related and are related to walking and biking in the city. So don't be afraid to, you know, apply if needed. And we have a whole chapter dedicated to potential grant opportunities that was updated as of the completion of this project. That's in Chapter 5 of this. So with that, again, I want to thank you again for the opportunity for KYUA to work in both communities of Bellflower and Paramount on this Active Transportation Plan. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions?
Yes.
Okay, I guess we just need a motion receiving file.
So moved.
Roll call please.
Councilmember Gieden?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Olmos?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hoff.
Yes. Item number nine, 2019 Civic Sparks Project Summary, Community Greenhouse Gases Inventory.
Hey, it's Mr. Vice Mayor and councilmembers. Through our efforts by the Gateway, by actually their efforts to the Gateway City Council governments which we're a member of, cities are actually conducting studies that measure greenhouse gases in their communities. In fiscal year 2019, we jumped on board with this initiative. So as part of last year's budget, the city council approved funds for us to participate in what's called the Governor's AmeriCorps program. And within that program, they have the Civic Spark program. The program actually gives us a person that is well-trained in this area of environmental analysis. So at the end of the program, this individual actually created an inventory for us with categories of Paramount's greenhouse gases. Now that this is done, we'll work with agencies like the Gateway Cities COG and the Institute for Local Government to assist us in reducing our carbon footprint. So with that, I will turn it over to our Public Works Director, Ms. Adrienne Friedrode. Adrienne?
Thank you, John. Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the city council. As indicated, last year, the city participated in the Governor's Initiative AmeriCorps program through their Civic Spark Fellowship program. Fellows are recent college graduates or postgraduate school students who are assigned to work with various disadvantaged communities to build capacity in three core areas, which are sustainability, water issues, and community engagement. Our assigned Civic Spark Fellow is Ms. Kristy Lang, and she's here somewhere. There she is. It's Kristy Lang. Kristy has a master's degree in earth science from the University of California, San Diego. The Civic Sparks Fellowship program, project included the preparation of a greenhouse gas emissions inventory for our community. Kristy's extensive background in science was essential to the project, as the collection and interpretation of data is highly technical in nature. The term for this program is one year, as you know, and will end on July 31st. So what is a greenhouse gas inventory? A GHG emissions inventory estimates the quantity of carbon dioxide emissions associated with community sources and activities taking place during the chosen analysis year. We use 2017 as our analysis year for our inventory. All emission sources in this inventory are quantified using calculation-based methodologies and converting them to the same unit of measure called carbon dioxide equivalent, or CO2E. So CO2E is the universal unit for comparing carbon dioxide emissions, different GHGs, expressed in terms of the global warming potential, or GWP, of one unit of carbon dioxide. A GHG inventory does not measure other industrial emissions like heavy metals. It only measures carbon dioxide. The GHG inventory is used to create a baseline for future reductions. And also, because each city is unique in terms of its composition, daily operations, and geographical areas, GHG inventories are not comparable to other cities. So how is a GHG inventory created? It follows a U.S. community protocol for accounting and reporting of greenhouse gas emissions. It involves a lot of data collection from various agencies and calculations for the five required sectors, which are electricity, natural gas, transportation, solid waste, water and wastewater. The data is then uploaded to the online tool called ClearPath, which was developed by local governments for sustainability. And it is a comprehensive emissions management platform that guides the preparation of a GHG emissions inventory. In terms of our key findings, the two largest sectors are transportation and mobile sources at 40.89%, and industrial energy at 40.37%. This is consistent considering our proximity to freeways and the city's industrial port. So in terms of work in progress, urban transportation emissions requires a regional approach, as the city has no control over local freeways adjacent to its borders. Therefore, having a regional presence is essential. The West End and a branch light rail project, which is anticipated for 2028, will help alleviate traffic and emissions and will create housing and commercial opportunities here in the city. Additionally, the city's aging diesel bus fleet was recently replaced by Long Beach Transit's zero emission fleet. And this will definitely improve our carbon footprint in the future. The GHG inventory will also help create reduction targets for the future and will focus our attention on transportation and industrial sectors. It will use the Sustainability Best Practice Framework as our guide for practical implementation plans, and we will promote clean energy practices. We will continue to work with the Gateway Cities COG to build climate change capacity. Implement- implement the COG's climate action planning framework, and continue to seek funding for the preparation of our own climate action plan. Additionally, in this fiscal year's budget, we included funding for a part-time public works administrative intern position that will help us promote sustainability practices citywide. So with that, our recommended action tonight is receive and file the community greenhouse gas inventory created through the Civic Spark Fellowship Program. That concludes my report, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions, Adrienne?
Move it.
I'll second.
Move to the second roll call, please.
Councilmember Key?
Yes.
Councilmember Lenn?
Yes.
Councilmember Omo?
Yes.
Yes. Item number 10, oral report, Fourth of July action report for the Fourth of July. And there was lots of action in Paramount.
Yes, there was. Yes, there was, Mr. Vice Mayor and council. Well, as you said, another Fourth of July is behind us. As we do every year, we schedule as much law enforcement as possible to help with the voluminous amount of calls we get for illegal fireworks every year. The deputies that are out there, they obviously do their very best to enforce the laws that we have in the books. So today, we'd like to present to you a refresher of what our existing laws are, share with you the results of this year's fireworks enforcement, and I'd also like to give you feedback or any direction on possible changes that we can make to existing laws. For instance, as you will see in a few minutes here, a couple of our neighboring cities just recently increased the fine for setting off illegal fireworks, and it's now higher than ours. Other cities have implemented, which is interesting, a separate, stiffer penalty for the sale of illegal fireworks. Any of these potential changes could actually help law enforcement to curtail the problems that we see each and every year with fireworks. So with that, I'll turn it over to our Director of Public Safety, Ms. Adrienne Lopez. We'll handle the items. Adrienne?
Thank you, John. So I'm going to be going over our 2019 Fourth of July campaign. I'll be going over the details, but first I'll start with giving you a background on our code. So in 2010, the city council adopted an ordinance and established that the organizations and how many fireworks vendors we can have in the city. Currently, we are at eight. Also established that safe and safe fireworks, the sales and the use of these fireworks. So the dates that the fireworks could be sold are June 28th through July 4th, but they could only be used on July 3rd and 4th. The ordinance also established the age limit, so you have to be 16 years or older to purchase safe and safe. In addition, the council adopted Resolution 10017, which established the fine amounts, and I'll go into that a little later. So what did we do for our public education campaign this year? As always, we provided fireworks flyers, and those are provided to our vendors. And every time they make a sale, they are supposed to give out a copy of this flyer, which outlines the ordinance. In addition, we discussed this at all our neighborhood watch meetings. We also had social media posts. We had billboards, and you probably saw those at our city parks, the four-by-eight signs that outlines our ordinance. In addition to that, we also had a public banner, which was on Paramount Boulevard. We had an article on Full Speed. And this year, we tried something different, which was an electronic message board, which was stationed at Paramount Sheriff's Station. So this is an example of some of the social media posts that we historically just send out through our social media outlets. This is what you saw on Paramount Boulevard, very colorful. And then, once again, this is what we did this year. And we picked Paramount Boulevard because we felt that that is well-protected traffic street for us. This was displayed from June 28th through July 4th. Now, what are our fine amounts? We have three fine amounts. $2.50 is for using safe and safe outside of the July 3rd and July 4th gates. We also have a fine for $3.50, and that is for selling safe and safe fireworks outside of the authorized vending or stations that we have throughout the city. And the last one is $1,000 fine for selling, or possessing, or setting off illegal fireworks. Now I'm going to talk about our deployment efforts. Every year, our SAO sergeant gets together with the team, and we identify hotspots. So what does that mean? That means we look at the calls for service for previous years and try to determine where our activity is the highest. With that information, then they put together strategic deployment plan and also enforcement strategies. So our fireworks suppression team works July 1st through July 4th, and they only answer to calls for fireworks, calls for service. So once again, we had a fireworks suppression team, which consisted of Paramount Special Assignment Team. We also had additional deputies on overtime, and we had two sergeants who worked during that operation. We had undercover vehicles, as well as mark patrol vehicles. Now I'm going to go over what we did this year. During our suppression time or operation, which again is July 1st through July 4th, there were 47 fireworks citations that were issued for $1,000 each. And the interesting part is that six of those citations were for the sales of illegal fireworks. 26 of those citations were issued to Paramount residents, and 21 were issued to non-residents. The deputies made for arrests, including an arrest for having a firearm. And this year, we had 60 calls for service during July 1st to July 4th. What we saw this year, and I actually had a resident tell me that he felt it was a little quieter this year, so we're going to do some comparisons here. So 2018 to 2019, we saw an overall decrease in fireworks citations. So in 2018, they issued 40, and in 2019, they issued 47, and that's where you see the increase. I'm sorry, I thought I said decrease, but it was an increase in citations that were issued. We also saw an increase in arrests. And in 2018, they made one arrest, and in 2019, they made four arrests. Calls for service, we saw a 33% decrease. So in 2018, we had 90 calls for service related to fireworks, and then in 2019, we had 60. So this slide shows you how many citations we've issued in the last four years. I didn't include 2019 because we haven't, we don't have the recovery rate to show. As you can see, we do have a recovery rate of over 50%, and the last two years has been over 60%. The average is about 49 citations that are issued, and we collect the total fines slightly So as John mentioned, we did a survey of 20 cities in Los Angeles County, and this is what we found. What I would like to point out here is that if you look at the city of Lakewood, they have a fine amount of $1,200, but it's broken down into two categories. It's $1,000 for setting off an illegal fireworks, and then they charge you $250 for disposing of that, those illegal fireworks. And the reason why they have $2,000 is that is for the sales of illegal fireworks. As mentioned in my presentation, we only have $1,000 for the setting, sales, or possession of illegal fireworks at $1,000.
If I could go back, Adrienne, I'd like to point out on the right side of the screen there, there are three cities, two of them which are our neighbors that recently increased their fine from $1,000 to $2,000.
That concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions?
Can you just confirm, the 21 non-residents, were those people that were visiting Paramount residents?
It would be safe to say yes, they were in our streets, and some of them had addresses in Moreno Valley, Southgate. Thank you.
Adrienne, how much of this money that you recover, how much does the city get to keep in that?
I believe it's 100%. Yeah, we don't have any court fees or anything like that, because these are administrative citations, so they don't go to the courts.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
I don't have a question, Mr. Mayor, but I would say, I don't think it'll solve the problem, but it may help not exacerbate the problem. So I would be in favor of the item.
Yeah, so what we'd like is for a consensus if there is, to go back and study the fees that we've been charged. If you could go back to that table, Adrienne, to see if we could bring in more in line, well, not in line, actually, because there are, the majority of their $1,000 fund, but our two neighboring cities just increased. So if that's something, that's a pleasure of the council to look at and bring it back.
Yeah, I'm in favor.
Adrienne, I have one question. On the neighboring cities that have the $2,000, you said it was Downey and Bellflower, are fireworks legal in those cities as well?
Yes, they are.
Okay, any other questions? Any comments from council members?
Regarding my service on the Siaka Committee, I would just like to inform people that there has been an uptick in coyote sightings, and there have been a couple of cities where small dogs have been attacked. So I was going to ask staff, I notice on our app, we have Siaka, but we don't have the coyote number. I don't know if it will be beneficial, but it does, because it's a little hard to track down, once you get a hold of Siaka, and then it can be away, the coyote can be gone. So maybe because there's this uptick happening, if we could do that. I did have two reports in Paramount, one was around the Lincoln School area. So if everybody could just keep their eye out, and if you see them, call right away before they hurt, you know, an animal or a child, that would be beneficial, and we can see about maybe adding it to our app. Thank you.
John, what did Siaka say about that, though? I think you have to call Department of Fish and Game when you have it.
Yeah, there's a direct number.
And then that they won't come out unless it's like a rabid animal?
Correct, yeah.
They'll come out, but they will, but they'll relocate the animal is all they do. They just move it to another area. They don't destroy them.
Correct, yeah. I believe what, and correctly if I'm wrong, council member, has mentioned that if Siaka won't, if it's just a coyote that's wandering by, yeah.
Yeah, Siaka won't, that's what I'm saying. When you call them, and they're going to turn around and give you the number for Fish and Game to come out. So that's why if we have a more direct number being is there's an uptick, whatever's available. But just know that it can come back, because the Fish and Game does not like to destroy the animal. They'll just relocate it back to its natural habitat.
I haven't noticed in our neighborhood lately, for a while we had it quite regular, but lately we haven't. I haven't seen it, have you, Lori?
No. Coyotes?
No.
They move to our neighborhood.
Walk right down the street.
I don't know the difference between that and.
If you've seen one, you would. You would, you would, yeah. Anybody else have any comments?
I do, I have a couple of comments. As you know, the community is aware that car racing is really, has been prevalent in Paramount. They block off intersections, they have about 100, 200 spectators that come out, they block off the intersections, and then they start doing donuts. And in the last few weekends, we've had like a major upkick where they're blocking off the intersections. There were about 200 people that were out there spectating, doing the donuts, throwing off M80s in the middle of the street, and just really going crazy. I'd like to give our deputies, you know, just to say, I don't want to say kudos, because you guys are not into like kudos, but you guys did a good job. You guys came out, and as soon as you guys swooped in, then the vehicles scattered. And then last Sunday, they were going to set up in the same location, but because residents had a warning that as soon as you see the spectators who get there, you start making the phone calls, and they were only allowed, they were only able to complete about two donuts in the middle of the street when deputies quickly came in and took care of business. So thanks to our deputies here in Paramount, they were on it. So I just want to, you know, reiterate to the residents, the minute you see them setting up, they'll park somewhere, then will then pick their location. And the reason why it's so important is it's because it's dangerous. Just this weekend alone, in LA, less than 20 miles from us, there were two fatalities. One of them, a vehicle flipped over, and somebody died inside. And then in LA as well, street racing hit somebody on a bike and killed him as well. So as soon as you see spectators arriving, call the police.
Councilmember Dylan, can I ask you where that at, where's that taking place at? You said there was.
You were sent a video in your email.
I did get it.
You didn't get it? Okay, I got it. It was, that one that I referred to, that occurred on two weekends in a row, was on Downey and Madison, the intersections. And if you drive by, you can see all the circles, and they're also on Madison as you approach Georgia in that area. But it's not specific to that area. It happens a lot off of Jackson, off of Virginia. I mean, it's happening all over, so it's really going to take the whole community. The minute you see them setting up, start making the calls, because your spectators of about 100 to 200 people start arriving first. And then I just want to mention that I attended the Ego Rapid Metro meeting, and we're still on schedule for 2020, when they're saying that our metro line will be coming through Paramount. And then I also just want to mention, I attended the Concert in the Park, and it was well-received. It looked like everybody enjoyed themselves, and, you know, it was well-attended. So those are my reports for the last couple.
Randy, you have anything?
I think I've said enough today. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for coming. I appreciate it.
All right. I too attended the concert in the park, and I went to the Friday night, first Friday night of the month market, and got my weekly supply kettle corn, and had a good turnout. So anyway, any other questions?
Yes, comments from staff, I have several, so bear with me. First of all, I'd like to do a couple of introductions from our public safety team. Our first one, we have a new sergeant, Sergeant Sanchez. He's standing up in the back. Sergeant Sanchez, he says here, is happily married, and proud father of a nine-year-old boy, year-old girl, and a 15-month-old baby girl. He enlisted in the U.S. Army, and he served there for eight years. Then he served for the California Department of Corrections starting in 2002. He became a deputy in 2005, and he was then assigned to the Los Angeles County Sheriff's East LA Station in 2009, and that's where he served in the positions of senior field training officer and detective. And then last year, 2018, he was promoted to sergeant, and he was assigned to the Lakewood Station. And just two weeks ago, he was assigned to come over here to Paramount. So with that, we welcome Sergeant Sanchez, if you'd like to say a few words.
No, pretty much sum it up. Thank you, very excited to be here, serve the community of Paramount. Anything you need, please let me know. I'm excited to be here, thank you.
And next, we have a new community service officer. His name is Mr. Roy Sharp. Roy comes to us from the Los Angeles Police Department. Before he was an LEP officer, he was employed as a hairstylist and worked for the YMCA. Roy enjoys spending time with his family. He also has three children and a dog, and two rabbits. He also enjoys competing in Ironman triathlons, so if any of you council members want to compete with him, go free to him. He enjoys camping and cooking good food, and he says he's happy to serve the city of Paramount, so welcome, Roy Sharp. And second of all, just to follow up on what was said earlier about the street racing, we are definitely also going to put out information on social media to please call if you do see that type of activity starting to form. It's really important, so we are going to, just to let you know, we're going to put that information out in the public as well. So we'll be doing that. Next, we have new clothing mine out that you will see out at different events that we'll have for sale. So this is a shirt that you'll see, along with our new, this is our brand new logo. You can't really see it there, but it's really small. It'll be a little bit bigger for the next round of shirts, but yeah, that's our new shirts. They come in different colors, blue and red. So here's our, or pink, I can't tell colors. Anyway, there's red right there. And then we also have a hooded sweatshirt as well.
Mayor needs one of those cannons to shoot him down.
Oh, there you go. And lastly, I'd like to say there are two birthdays among staff members. Ms. City Clerk, Ms. Lana Chikami, and our finance director, Ms. Karina Lam. They both are celebrating birthdays tonight.
With that, we will adjourn this meeting to August 6th at 6:00 PM.